Okay, good evening. Call to order the September 1st, 2016, meeting of the City of Bellamy Plan and Commission. We have a couple people in attendance tonight. Hi, thanks. If you guys could silence your cell phones or laptops, that'd be great. Heather, please call the roll.
Phyllis McKee? Here. Tom Grendstad?
Here.
Garrett O'Brien?
Here.
Steve Crooks?
Here.
Jeff Brown?
Here.
Lisa Anderson's excused.
Okay, we don't have any meetings to approve from, or minutes to approve from previous meetings, so we'll go into our public comment period. Tonight, we're going to be considering three requests to docket amendments to the Bellamy Comprehensive Plan for the 2016-2017 calendar year. The amendment proposals include one request in the Barclay neighborhood and two requests in the Cordada neighborhood. But at this time, if there's anybody that would like to speak, address the commission on any subject other than tonight's hearing, now's the time to do that. We will have a public comment period for anybody who would like to present on this topic later in the meeting. Okay, I don't see any takers. So, we'll go get into the staff proposal. Greg Acker?
Good evening, Greg Acker, Planning and Community Development Department. Welcome back. It's nice to see you all again. Tonight, we have, we start our annual comp plan amendment review process, and the first step in that is to look at the proposals that we received and decide which ones should be docketed or scheduled for review to go through the formal process. Planning Commission is the first step in that process. Your role is to consider these three proposals in light of the docketing criteria that's listed in your staff packet, and make a recommendation to council on whether or not you think these three proposals should go through the formal comp plan amendment and review process. And to give you a brief introduction to each of the three proposals is Moshe Quinn.
Good evening, Moshe Quinn, Planning Department. Basically, what you have in front of you tonight is the 2016-2017 docket proposals. As Greg mentioned, we received three requests, one for the Barclay neighborhood and two for the Cordada neighborhood. And as mentioned in your packet, there are several review criteria that staff, as well as Planning Commission and council, look at when reviewing docketed, docketing proposals. The first one, does the city have resources available to take it through the review process for the upcoming 2016-2017 review period? And if the proposal meets one or more of the following: represents an issue addressed in the comprehensive plan or neighborhood plan, demonstrate potential to serve the public interest by implementing goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, which we've stated in your packet, some goals that staff believes are relevant to the proposals at hand. And as we continue on, does the proposal serve a public interest to consider the proposal in the next docketing cycle? And amendments addressing changing circumstances, changing community values, or updated information that are updated or aren't warranted in that area? And if there's any state laws requiring the change to the city's comprehensive plan. So, the very first of the three proposal is located in the Barclay neighborhood in Area 1. And what the applicant would like to do here is change approximately .5 acres from residential single to commercial planned. And as you can see here, it's just this little portion here. This portion was actually created back in the early 1900s when a zoning line, or city limit line, was established all the way through this way. This portion of the city was annexed in 2016, February 2016, and it was zoned commercial planned. However, this portion here was already in the city, but it's actually part of this property here. So, this zone line established that. Here's a little bit closer aerial view, and you can see it's this portion right here. And what the applicant is seeking is basically to have his entire parcel under one zoning designation to approve the developable area on their property. Currently, if they were to develop with this area being zoned residential single, they would have additional setbacks from this zone line here. So, this provides additional opportunity to set back from the true property line here, as well as there's a transmission line that goes along here. So, they're already limited, so this basically provides opportunities for the better use of land and also corrects the zoning boundary. Because if, as I mentioned, this area was once in the urban growth area, and part of their lot was within the city limits. So, that's that change there. Staff believes that this proposal does meet the docking requirements and does serve a public interest and believes that it should be docketed and reviewed in the next cycle of amendments. Any questions on this one? The second proposal is located in the Cordada neighborhood in Area 20. And looking at this picture here, is basically, this is all one parcel, and a zone line was established that basically divided this land. So, you have the western portion here that's zoned industrial planned, and this on the other side residential single. Now, this area was annexed to the city in 2013, and the city had to establish comparable zoning. And in the county, this area here was zoned URMX, so Urban Residential Mixed Use, so a residential single zoning designation. So, the city was required to adopt comparable comparable zoning. As with the other area, was light impact industrial and zoned industrial plan when it came into the city. Now, this area here is, when you look at the topography and some of the other environmental constraints, there are significant wetlands along the eastern side of the property here. And current access is taken through their property that they have here through this property to serve this area. And so, what you have here is really an isolated residential single zone area. This area here is a wetland mitigation bank for the Janiki project. The area up in here is city wetland mitigation bank area. And then down below it, you have the city's regional stormwater facility, as well as conservation easement area here. So, it's kind of already separated from the other area of 20. And really, the only access is from PAC Highway through industrial zone area to this area This map here kind of shows a high level reconnaissance, 2003 wetland inventory. It's basically done through aerial photos, so it's not 100%. So, basically, you can kind of see where they had industrial construction activity up in this area here. And what they would like to do is have it all under one zone so that the developable area here can be added to their other areas that's developable, so they have more developable lands. If it was to develop under the residential single designation, what you have is, you have a zone line that basically runs here, but you're going to lose even more developable land because of additional setbacks you have to have from residential single areas, is what you're looking at here. So, staff too believes that this meets the docketing criteria, serves a public interest, places the entire parcel under a single zoning designation, and believe it's warranted to take a look at, to look at all the factors involved for the appropriate zone for this area. However, with all the wetlands associated with the property, staff is recommending that you, that Planning Commission add a condition that when the applicant submits their rezone application, they also submit a critical areas report. And that's to ensure that the land is suitable for development under their proposed zoning designation. So, what we want to do is have a critical area report based on the city's critical areas regulations to find out what the buffers are and how much land there is available for this proposal here. You can see that, and just a little bit more background information, you can see there's been a lot of activity already in here that were done under county permits, as well as fill and grade permits that were also in the county. The last of the three proposals is located up in Area 9 of the Cordada neighborhood. This area is zoned institutional plan, and what the applicant would like to do is basically expand the permitted uses for this area. And what they were looking at adding is commercial, residential, mixed, and planned, to allow a couple different opportunities to develop the site. This area, too, is encumbered by critical areas. You have a tributary to Baker Creek that runs along the western, eastern portion of the property, and you have open space that runs along the western portion, as well as, it appears there may be some isolated wetlands internal to the property. Some of the surrounding land uses to this proposal is you have residential uses to the west and residential uses to the north, and then you have a professional office located to the east of this area. With this proposal, staff also believes that it meets the docking criteria and serves a public interest to look at this proposal and determine the appropriate zone for this, whether it be what the applicant is proposing, or it stays institutional. This area would require the creation of a new sub area for this 2.2 acre parcel approximately, or if it's determined that it's more aligned with what's, the zoning that's across to this side, which is zoned institutional residential multi, you know, we can evaluate that through the legislative process for the rezone. And this, too, we are recommending that the commission add the condition that the applicant submit a critical areas report in part with their rezone application. And therefore, to demonstrate that the land proposed for the rezone is suitable for development under the proposed zone.
Moshe?
Yes?
What's the existing land designation on this one?
This one is institutional.
And are they requesting a rezone of the specific land use at this time, or just to get docketed?
Yeah, they are requesting that, let me go back one. They're requesting that it go to institutional, commercial, residential, multi, and mixed plan.
Okay.
So, basically, looking at having the ability to do commercial and residential and/or mixed use on the property. That concludes my presentation. Is there any questions that I may address for you?
We'll have some questions for you, I'm sure, and some discussion. I think we had one speaker, is there any other presentation from staff? Greg? One speaker, and I see a couple people here, so if you didn't sign up, you're more than welcome to speak. But we'll open the public comment period on tonight's docket requests. And so, Sharon Dubruler, did you, you just signed up?
I'm just here because I saw something on the Barclay neighborhood.
Okay.
And I wanted to find out.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, so, all right, so we're not going to have any public comment on these issues. And again, sir, did you?
Sure.
Oh, yeah, by all means, please.
Could we have lights on, please?
We'll turn, we'll turn the lights on for you, and you step up there and just state your name, and for the record.
My name is Tom McMaster, and my wife and I are the owners of the property associated with ReZone Docket, REZ 2016 0004. I believe the proposal meets one or more of the annual docketed criteria per BMC 2020 030A that is required for inclusion in the annual docket of comprehensive plan mitigate and neighborhood plan amendments, per my response to the criteria, to A, B, C, and D in the application to the city, specifically the answers to critical criteria, excuse me, to A and to B address the comprehensive plan, neighborhood plan recommendations for mixed uses and commercial services in future developments, as required due to population growth. Examples of commercial retail services would be, for example, Papa Murphy's, Subway, Starbucks, small grocery store, barber shop, hair salon, a pharmacy, a bank. There was a pharmacy at Peace Health Facility, but they've taken that away now since Albertson's bought the Haggins. I believe these services, in addition to those allowed under the current institutional zoning, would be in the public interest. An example of residential mixed would be an apartment located above a commercial establishment. Benefits for commercial and retail uses at this location would be the close proximity to the residential areas of North Cordada, to the Cordada Neighborhood Park, to the northwest of the property, and to the future 21 acre park east of Cordada Parkway to the southeast. Commercial and retail uses in the local area would also help reduce traffic congestion on the guide to a limited extent. For these reasons, we're requesting that the proposal be included in the annual docket for 2017. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
There, as far as the additional wetland delineation or work that Moshe had described, there is an ongoing discussion between the city and myself concerning the specific binding site plan that is in place and has been in place since 97 or so in the auditor's office, which basically outlines the areas that are buffer zones in mitigation and establishes these boundaries and everything. So, I've resisted doing any more work as far as the delineation, because my position is, it's a matter of law that the binding site plan is it. And I submitted two reports to planning that detail all the reasons and the laws and everything. There's also another part of the document that addresses this regional detention area, which surrounds the west and south, south part of the property. This area was actually human-induced or man-made, and I submitted the information about that when it was originally constructed, when Horton Road was put in. And they raised the culvert that goes underneath the road to, under the hydraulic project approved from the state, to create a detention area all the way back through there. And as you probably know, detention areas are not wetland areas by law in the ordinances of the city. So, my position is that the binding site plan, which has a buffer in an area around there, and then there's an open space, it's open space there too, and then open space on the west side, which was shown on the slide, those all handle that area, and they're pretty much set. And so, that's an issue that needs to be resolved, and it's, it's actually, it's a legal issue that needs to be resolved. And so, I went forward with the rezone, because I believe that it'll all come out where it's correct. That is the law. They're right in the ordinances and everything, but typically, no matter whether a person has a binding site plan or not, the first request is a wetland delineation. But contracts are contracts, and that binding site plan is, I believe, valid. It is no sunset clause. And so, just so you know, that's kind of the little extra issue associated with this property. I don't believe it's correct to just go over the top of a binding site plan and say, no, it's old. My position is that that would be like paying for 20 years on your mortgage and then deciding, well, I'm not going to pay anymore because it's old. And I had an attorney visit with the Planning Department and an attorney visit with the city attorney, and they were not willing to change their position. And what I was looking at is a ruling on the laws, but they said they are not willing to do that. So, it may be that this actually ends up where it goes to the courts to determine that. But I do know the, there was an amendment to the Constitution of the United States way back that had to do with contract law and how valid contracts are. It's, contracts are contracts. And so, I feel confident that that would prevail. I was in a lawsuit over contracts when I was a plant manager at March Point Co-Generation at the Texaco Refinery, and we had a huge similar thing where they wanted to get out of a contract. And each side spent $5 million on legal fees, and we prevailed. And so, I think that the mining site plans are actually, even though some people have allowed the city to get them to do a delineation, which then changes the boundaries, and I don't think, think that's correct. I don't think people, I don't think people had to do that.
Well, thanks, thanks for bringing that to our attention. We'll ask some, we'll have some questions about that as well, too.
These documents are, if you want to read these documents, there, there's two of them, and they're, they're within the Planning Department there.
Sure, thank you.
So, you can read them, yeah. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I think we'll take these one at a time, and then we'll go back. If, we'll vote on all three. And again, we're not, we're not deciding any rezones at this time. This is just docketing requests. So, this is whether or not these proposals meet the criteria to be docketed, and then they'll go through a further vetting process if they are docketed and the rezones presented. So, this is, the criteria is different. What we're looking at tonight is whether or not they meet the docketing request. So, we'll start with the first, the Barclay rezone request, and if anybody has any questions on that.
First, I have a comment on the docketing criteria. I bring it up every year for the docketing, and that is, should the city at some time have a nefarious planning department? I'm scared that they could use item A, the city has resources, including staff and budget, for the inclusion of the docketing. And I'm scared that somehow, sometime, somewhere, somebody's going to say, we don't have the resources, and they're going to say that simply because they don't want to consider what's being asked to be docketed. And I know I can't change this, I'm just, you know, I shout it out every year, and I just think it's reasonable to at least consider, not this present planning department, but a future planning department could possibly run rampant over somebody.
That's a valid, that's a valid concern. When you look at this criteria, and the city looks at their work program and says, you know, obviously, some of these rezone requests would be smaller in nature for the staff resources needed to do it. What is the idea behind that first criteria, and how do you guys go about determining whether resources are available or not?
When we look at these, it's been our policy and practice, if someone is willing to go through the time and expense to request a rezone, as we all know, it's an arduous process, takes a lot of time, it's expensive for applicants. If someone is willing to do that, we have, in all the instances I'm aware of, supported going through the process. We do look at our work program. We want to make sure that we can do justice to these applications and spend the amount of time and resources that it's necessary sometimes to review them. These three that we have this year are relatively minor on the scale of really big to really small. They're, they're pretty minor, and so we're comfortable making that recommendation. And to my knowledge, and I've been doing this a long time, as you know, we've never used that first criteria as a reason not to docket something. I suppose it's possible, but we always have, we always have to remember that staff doesn't make the decision. The council makes the decision. So, even if staff says, for some reason, no, we don't think this should go forward, we just don't have the time and resources this year, you get to make a recommendation, and the council makes the decision. So, it's never up to staff to decide whether or not these go forward, despite what Tom thinks.
I'm just curious, if an applicant was to apply for, to be docketed for a rezone, there's a fee with that. If there wasn't, found that there wasn't sufficient resources to docket that rezone, and they were to apply the following year, would their fee be waived, or would they have to reapply?
They'd have to reapply.
Okay. All right. What would be the process of changing the criteria for rezones there?
It's a text amendment, so it would have to come to you guys, and for public hearing, it's just like any other change to the zoning code. It would come to the Planning Commission first for public hearing and recommendation, and then on to council.
Well, Tom.
I'm not suggesting that.
Okay.
There we go there. I just want to raise the.
That's a valid, it's a valid.
The specter of the possibility. Anyway, getting back to the Barclay neighborhood, I have one comment. I think that it meets all the criteria, and I think it makes sense, if only in a traffic mode. Without the zoning change, you've got a single-family lot of whatever size it is, I don't know, with only access from the state highway. It's possible that the owner would grant an easement through his commercial property to that, but, you know, I don't see that that would be a reasonable alternative for for an owner if he wanted to sell that, that single-family zone property and unload it. So, anyway, I'm, it's, it just makes sense to me, just purely from a traffic point of view, that this be changed and get rid of the possibility of some more congestion at that, at that intersection. Granted, it's a regulated intersection, it's got a traffic light and everything, but having residential approach in and out that close to the intersection, just by its very nature, increases the possibility of a crash.
Steve?
Yeah, I had a chance to view the property, and to me, it makes absolutely no sense to put a single-family resident on that small little corner adjoining the commercial property. Anybody that wanted to think they could do it, I'd like to meet them. So, I strongly support this docketing.
Yeah, I agree. I clearly think it's just a kind of an anomaly how that was created. It should be, you know, contiguous ownership, it should be the same commercial zoning as Area 27. Any other comments on this first proposal? Okay, we'll move on to the second, the second proposal.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
We should vote on them separately, so if someone wants to go ahead and make a motion on the first one, that'd be appropriate.
Okay. Can I ask somebody to make a motion to approve?
I move that we recommend that the first proposal be suggested to council for docketing for 2017, as suggested in the finding of facts, conclusions, and recommendations.
Any other motion or second?
A second.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Onto the second proposal, Cordada neighborhood. Just to, just to confirm, because my packet's a little disorganized here. So, this is the area with residential single behind the industrial zone that abuts Pacific Highway, correct? Okay. Okay. Any questions for staff on this? Steve?
Yeah, is this area, I know it was newly added to the neighborhood, Cordada neighborhood, does this fall under the auspices of the PUD, Cordada PUD? Or is it just the other Area 9?
It does not fall within the Cordada PUD.
Okay, thank you.
On the, the Mahogany Avenue that runs to the south of this property, is there any future improvements planned for, for Mahogany Avenue?
More than, I think, right now, Mahogany is planned for connecting to Pacific Highway. In relation, what I'm not sure of is that the abutting right-of-way to this property, June Road right-of-way, which is just to the north, is also right-of-way that's available. But there are also significant environmental features in that area. So talking with the applicant, more than likely, when they go to do a more intense development, they would apply for variance through Public Works. Unless they find another type of amenity this right-of-way can, can provide, like maybe a trail corridor that connects it to the, to the east a little bit more as the Janiki proposal gets more out of the conceptual design phase.
Yeah, Mahogany is going to be built. It's going to be built by the city. It's the, sort of the back way into Costco. So it is going to be built. June Road, we've talked about for a long, long time. It's unlikely that that road is ever going to be built because of the wetlands.
And that runs north-south?
No, June Road runs east-to-west.
Oh, oh, I see. Right, yeah, I got you. Okay.
It abuts, the right-of-way abuts this property to the north, but it's not ever going to be accessed. The only access to this property is from PAC Highway. The only realistic access is from PAC Highway. And that would be through the industrial property to get to residential, so.
I had a question on the wetland report. So the city staff recommendation is to request, as a condition of the rezone docketing, that they prepare an environmental report prior to presenting for the rezone, right?
Right.
That's correct.
So if it gets docketed.
Similar to the, to the third proposal as well. So both, the same condition for, for both of those.
And, and the rationale is, is one of the rezone criteria says that, is the land suitable for development under the proposed zone? So they're proposing industrial. So we'll use that information to actually go out and take a look to see how much of this area is developable based on meeting the city's current critical areas and buffer requirements, you know, associated with the property. They actually have, it's in your packet. They kind of show a report that was done, but it was done actually in the county, not to city standards. So that you can kind of get a reference of where the developable area is. But more than likely, these buffers will increase over more. And it kind of helps, looking at the proposal saying, like, if this small portion of area was added to the industrial area, provides a little bit more developable opportunity rather than trying to develop a small node of, you know, residential single type of development there.
So this property would be under single ownership with the industrial property. It currently is contiguous ownership?
Currently, right now, it's owned by LLC for the main portion. The connecting piece that connects to PAC Highway is owned by a different company or LLC. And right currently, they have an access easement through that property to access this property here. At one time, before docketing, it was all under the same ownership, the front as well as the larger piece in the back.
Okay. I guess my, I guess my only question or concern on the environmental report, I think it's a good idea to establish sort of a baseline of what the capacity of the property is. However, if it's part of a larger industrial parcel, it could serve a benefit strictly as just being an open space or maybe a mitigated, you know, drainage area. Could, could it not be utilized for purposes other than strictly development of buildings and infrastructure? Serving a larger, serving a larger parcel. If it's part of a larger parcel that is on the same.
Well, I guess it all depends on, you know, once they get the wetland delineation done and establish where the critical areas are and the associated buffer. I mean, you may have a much smaller piece of land that it might not be, it might not pencil for development, which then, you know, they may consider something differently, different for that. But what we want to make sure is that, you know, looking at this is how much developable area is there. And we also can look at and research, you know, what the city's capacity for housing units in this area, based on that information, to get more of an exact count. In your packet, the applicant identified, you know, a certain percentage of loss of residential units if this was rezoned. But, you know, we want to confirm exactly how many housing units we would lose and not go off of our guesstimate through our methodology that we use for the whole comprehensive planning process. So it kind of gives us an idea of what can and what can't be done there.
Mm-hmm, I see.
It'll get a little more criteria for the applicant to, to look at.
Okay. Any, any other questions on this proposal? Okay, well.
I have a comment. Normally, I would be against something that carves into a zone like this does. But as it is going to be separated from the residential zone by these wetlands and buffers, the, the actual impact of rezoning it to industrial is pretty much eliminated. So I'm, I'm in favor of this one as well.
Yeah, that, that's a good point. When the overhead aerial view is up, you know, it, it's, the wetlands existing form a nice horseshoe around that property. And so it, in my opinion, is more appropriately zoned as the industrial that's to the west of it.
And I just want to add, and what we were thinking is that that added environmental features there would actually add to the other critical areas on adjacent properties to add, to widen a better transition area between the industrial and the residential area on both sides.
I agree. Okay, well, if we have any more discussion, we'll take a motion. Somebody like to make a motion on this one? This is Cordada neighborhood, Area 20, application of rezon from single-family to industrial.
I'll move that, that we forward this to City Council with recommendation for docketing with the proviso as staff has recommended that a critical areas report be required with any rezone application.
Very good. We have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. All right, our third, our third rezon request is again in the Cordada neighborhood, docketing request, I'm sorry. Our third docketing request, Cordada neighborhood, Area 9. The applicant spoke tonight on behalf of his proposal. Thank you for that. Any questions on this docketing request?
Steve?
Yeah, I have one. Maybe this is too early to ask, but if docketed tonight, and my question is, is the role of the Cordada PUD. It says they should prepare an amendment to the Cordada PUD that needs to be processed concurrently with the zoning request. It's my understanding that they have actually veto power. If they agree not to amend, then this proposition goes no farther. Is that correct?
I'm not a, I'm not 100% on that. I just, that's, I think that's one of the rationales, to do it concurrently, to find out and get comment from the, the PUD representatives for this area.
Well, my question is why concurrently? It's just going to take a bunch of staff time if they're going to turn it down. It seems to me, should find out first what their position is on this. If it's a, if it's a go, since it was docketed, then it should be, that should, that information should come out first. We shouldn't go through all this staff time working concurrently to get it done if it's going to go no further. If, in fact, the PUD can veto the amendment and stop it from going to City Council. Or is, or do they just have a recommendation?
Again, Steve, we're not sure. My recommendation would be that we go ahead and, and docket this and then investigate that. If it gets docketed, then we'll do the research necessary to find out what the role, what the formal role of the PUD is.
Yeah, I just don't want to see a lot of work done needlessly.
Yeah, we agree.
I am familiar with the area and I, I think it's a, it's a good request for the area. It's set for a long time vacant and the area is growing leaps and bounds. And I think that would be needed and good luck.
Sir, we, our public comment period's over. We, we can't have an open discussion here, so thanks. We can do that after the meeting. Thank you. I think I'll, I'll bring it up again with the, because this was brought up during the applicant's testimony is that the, the requirement of the wetland report. Moshe, you mentioned on the last docketing request that that environmental report, critical area study would be needed information at the time of an actual rezone request. Can you, can you kind of expand on that?
Yeah.
What you're talking about, one of the criteria for rezones is, is the land suitable for development?
Correct. That is one of the criteria is basically, is the land proposed under the zone by the applicant suitable for development under the zoning designation that is being proposed? And so that's what we want to look at. And so when you look at this proposal, he's basically looking at every single possible zone in the neighborhood. So he's really opening the doors for any possible type of use. And so when you look at this, you know, it may be a different recommendation from staff during the formal rezone process saying, "Well, maybe this site's not suitable for retail development because you only have this much buildable area and to meet all the applicable codes, including critical areas and all the land use development requirements for parking, it may not be suitable for retail. However, it may be suitable for maybe some sort of residential multi-development." So that we might have a, a different option or a different approach. So he may not get everything under the umbrella he possibly could, but that's what we would look at. For this specific site, I mean, the mining site plan, specific mining site plan that he's recommending was, was prepared in 1998. We have current critical areas ordinance which have established larger buffers, of course. This property is undeveloped and I, I don't know the exact date, but I know there's a certain timeline that you have to develop under before you have to meet current critical area regulations. And talking with our environmental staff and the planning department, they have also mentioned that there are some internal wetlands that aren't shown on this property here. So once we get that information, you know, they may have to look at doing other alternatives for maybe mitigation, you know, involved in, in order to develop it. But we do concur that it does meet the docketing criteria and it should be looked at. And, you know, if the council and planning, off of Planning Commission's recommendation, decide that, you know, we should look at all different zones, then we'll do that through the process. But this way, we know how much land is there because this is similar. It's surrounded by environmental features. And you have, you know, residential multi-development on both sides already as well.
Yeah. Well, I think that, uh, thank you. I think that's good clarification. The, the city's require, or request, or recommendation to require the critical areas report, I feel like anytime that you have a critical area within the vicinity of a property that's proposing a rezone, that information is critical in establishing any kind of measure or benchmark of what, what can and can't be done there. So as far as the conflicts that may arise with the PUD and, and with existing ordinances, that's really, you know, not for, not for the purview of what this, what this criteria is. So any other comments or thoughts on this third docketing request? Okay.
I'll make a motion to docket the amendment to the Cordada neighborhood, Area 9, with the stipulation that a critical area report is prepared in accordance with the city's ordinance.
Very good. We have a motion? We have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously, 5-0. Okay, that's it for, we'll close the public hearing at this time. That's, those are our three items on the agenda. And we got any new business from Straka?
Couple things. As I was mentioning to some of you before the meeting, the council has been reviewing the comp plan for months now, meeting almost weekly to go through the various chapters. I believe that they have completed initial review of all, all chapters except the parks chapter, which they'll be taking up in a couple of weeks. There is a public hearing scheduled for, they've already had one hearing. They had a hearing at the beginning of the process. They're going through, they're making some suggested changes and they want to give the public an opportunity to comment on those changes. So they're going to have an additional public hearing on October 17th. So mark your calendars. We expect that they will complete and adopt the comp plan early in November. And as I, as I mentioned, I, I believe that they have accepted all of the changes that the Planning Commission recommended, at least all of the changes that we've gone through so far. So congratulations. You guys did great work and it's been well received at the council. The other thing I wanted to mention, and maybe some of you are aware that county adopted their comprehensive plan in, in August, last month now, which means they adopted the population growth forecast, the employment growth forecast, and the UGA boundary, basically that the city council recommended. So there's no change to our urban growth area boundary. The South Y Street area is still in a reserve classification like it was before. And they did add the South Kaitak property as a reserve as well. So those two areas are reserves, no change to the rest of our boundary. And they adopted the growth forecast essentially as recommended by the city council, which is a relief because those are what we've been using, obviously, to update the plan. And so we're thankful that they didn't make any last-minute changes that would have caused more work for us and perhaps for you as well. We do have coming up, in September, a minor code amendment dealing with unclassified uses. So if you've got a use that's not necessarily listed in a zone as permitted, there's no real way in our code for us to deal with that in a, in an administrative manner. So we want to set up a process where someone could say, "My use is similar to the other uses that are allowed here. It's not listed, but it's similar." And the planning director could make that determination. We could do that administratively.
Right, I got a question on that. So there'd be a criteria, we're looking to develop a criteria where the planning director could say, you know, "This isn't a specifically identified use, but it's similar in nature. It meets the office criteria."
Right. And so that change in those criteria will be coming to you for review later this month. And then in October, we've got to draft some final regulations dealing with retail and processing of marijuana. We've had an interim ordinance for months, years perhaps. The state has finally finalized the rules for both medical and retail. And so we've got to make some changes to our code to align those, that with state law. That will be coming to you early in October. And also in October, the brand-new subdivision ordinance will be coming to you for initial review.
For the first, the first draft of the?
First draft.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah.
When you say early in October, are you talking about, was it the 4th?
The 6th.
The 6th.
The 6th would be the marijuana issue and the 20th would be the initial review of the subdivision regulations. And that would be a work session on the 20th with a hearing to follow, probably in November. Once the council, and then the last thing is, well, two things. We're going to be working on the, the annexation phasing plan, which is something that you didn't see when it was initially adopted by council almost a decade ago now. So the annexation phasing plan will be coming to you probably before the end of the year. And then probably early next year, assuming council adopts the comp plan with the policy direction in there about ADUs, I would expect early next year, the ADU ordinance will be coming to you.
What was the policy direction on ADUs? What was the policy direction on ADUs?
They have, as I said, they haven't adopted anything. They debated it. They actually initially made some changes to the policy recommendation that this group had. Remember, you had direction with some bullet points, what the ordinance should focus on. They initially thought they might make some changes to that. They actually voted to make the change, you may have heard, to take out the owner occupancy direction. Then at the last meeting, they reversed that position and put it back in. So it is essentially as you, as this commission recommended.
Greg, excuse me, could you, you mentioned October 17th as a meeting of some sort? No, I misunderstood you then.
Sorry. October 6th is the marijuana issue and then October 20th is the subdivision.
And there was nothing about an October 17th? And that's county council, I mean, city council, okay, great.
Okay, that's all I have?
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right, meeting adjourned, thanks.